We're live. Good morning. Welcome to the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee of the 7th of 2022. It's the 11th of August 2022. It's one minute past nine. And calling attendants, we have councillor Kunselman, councillor Milligan, councillor Fekner, councillor Tully, councillor Johnic, and the deputy mayor councillor Madsen. We also have councillor Ireland on teams, on an audio link which was approved by council on the 28th of July this year, therefore we don't need to vote for her to be on there because that was already done. And I understand that councillor Doyle will be with us in about 15 minutes. I don't have any other apologies. So hand over to councillor Kunselman for a welcome to acknowledgement of country.
Acknowledging our gratitude that we share this land today, but also acknowledging the cost of that sharing and our hope that we can move to a place of justice and partnership together and that we welcome further opportunities for engagement.
Thank you councillor Kunselman. Are there any declarations of interest in the matters on the agenda today? No, thank you. Business outstanding. We have a response to a petition for the leash-free dog area in Camira Recreation Park. And the recommendations come back to us, recommendation A, B and C, that the leash-free dog area within the Camira Recreation Park remain in its current configuration without further expansion and that further planning be undertaken for the Camira Recreation Park, including community engagement to seek the sentiment of sport and recreation needs of the community and that the chief petition be advised of the outcome of this report. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions?
Yes, please.
Then can I ask the relevant council officer, please?
Good morning, Mayor and councillors. Mark Baston, team lead, open space and facilities.
Thank you councillor Johnny.
Thank you, Mr Baston. Just querying the open space on the south side of the netball courts there at the Camira Sports Grounds. Is there an opportunity to place a small dog, leash-free dog park there within our policy provisions? If it's set back from the residential areas by that 50 metre mark?
Unfortunately, in terms of the available space, you wouldn't achieve the 500 metres. And then given the proximity then to Sandy Creek, we have nominal offsets as well. So it is constrained in that space.
Okay. So in keeping with the, I guess, the policy requirements, then the dog park there itself and the netball courts are not actually...
Technically, they're not in terms of, but the original leash-free dog area was built prior to the policy.
Right. So do you have any suggestions, I guess, for making that small area available for small dogs?
I guess I'll stand by the recommendations in the report. Subject to, I guess, with Springfield Central Sports Complex, the needs in terms of with the netball, understanding all that and that flow-on effect in terms of then the need for the netball courts. And then if we were to look at demolishing the netball courts, we need to engage with the broader community in terms of then the needs. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Sorry, was it 50 metres or 500 metres away from the...
Fifty, fifty metres, yeah. And that's from the boundary.
From the fence line?
Yes.
Okay. And so, sorry, how big does the dog park, small dog park have to be if it's separated?
It is desirable. We're looking at 500 square metres.
500 square metres.
So that could be in any number of configuration in terms of, I guess, a 20 by, sorry, there's different examples around the city.
Okay. I'm just doing up some scoping now on near maps and I can actually fit that in. I know that Sandy Creek is adjacent, but I know that there's repair works that need to be done from, on that fence line that borders the netball courts anyway. The last time I went out there was knocked over because of the floods.
Yeah, I believe the rectification work so yet took her. It's also understanding too, you would want a nominal offset if the netball courts were reactivated for formalised sport. You'd want at least probably five metres.
Okay.
And that's again, it's a highly constrained area.
Hmm. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr Baston? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll move this so we can get into discussion about the matter, if that's okay. So I'll move that. Do I have a second there? Thank you councillor Johnic. I'll open up for discussion.
Can I just kick off just preliminary comments that I think probably it's a bit of a dichotomy here. It was a council officer who recommended to the resident to put in a petition, which I think gave them false hope. And I've already previously raised the appropriateness of that anyway. Because it leads to these sorts of situations that they thought that that was a good indication that something positive would come out of this. This arose, I think about a year ago where one resident contacted me and I think councillor Johnic in relation to larger dogs biting and attacking the smaller dogs in that triangular area. And that was of concern. It's always going to be a small, smallish off-leash dog park. I just think there, there might be some alternatives. I don't know, we can fashion an appropriate amendment today. But if we can't, I'd like to see this lie on the table and, you know, for other consideration to take it forward.
And I think councillor, I think I raised with the earlier, that was, I noted in the documentation that on page 15, there was a service request back in 2017 that's been closed requesting more shade for some trees to be planted. That's not in our capital works programme from 2022 to 2025. And I understand to plant those trees would cost about $3,700. So I guess I'm looking at how we can address the concerns that are being raised by those residents as well.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. So I know that it's fairly busy, this dog park. And I know there's been a number of attacks on smaller dogs now. It's definitely a popular dog park and it's mixed with the larger breeds and then the smaller breeds. And it's kind of a networking environment for the local residents to go down there and take their smaller dogs down there. I don't want to take away a facility like the netball courts, especially when we've got considerations at the southern sports fields. So it is a little bit of a tricky situation, but I think that it needs further deliberation.
Yep. I do know that recommendation B is that further planning be undertaken for the Camira Recreation Park, including community engagement. Perhaps we could put a timeframe on that so it doesn't drag out.
Yeah, I'm open to that, ma'am.
Yep. Because I took to the CEO, what would be a, is it three months, four months?
What's feasible?
Can I just clarify what that means? Is that in relation to all, all current and potential uses of that area? Or just looking at the off-leash?
Up to us councillor Tully.
Yeah, but the recommendation doesn't specify.
Yep.
It just says sport and recreation needs of the community there, doesn't it? So.
Yeah.
I think because of the netball courts, because if it goes to expand, it'll take away three of the six netball courts. So I think you have to include the people that are using the netball courts as well.
Oh, yeah. I just feel perhaps that it needs a fresh head of eyes, fresh consideration. So, yeah, rather than just moving into that, directly into that engagement and, you know, even if we specified a cut-off date, I think we just need to sit down offline and work our way forward with this to see if there's a suitable solution. So I'll, I'll move this, this matter lie on the table.
Okay. Are you happy, as a fellow divisional councillor, are you happy to second that? Yep, thank you. Any other discussion on the matter lying on the table?
No, just, I guess it would be wise to engage with the sport and rec for future sport and rec options there so that we're not leaving a legacy issue.
Okay. With this done, the discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you for it to lie on the table. We move on to item two, which is another response to a petition for the opening of River Road at Bundambur to traffic at its intersection with Nelson Street. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this matter? Yes, councillor Fekner, thank you. May I speak to the relevant council officer?
Good morning, everyone. Josh Ellis, Principal Engineer, Traffic Operations.
Thank you, Mr Ellis. Councillor Fekner?
Thanks, Mr Ellis. And I'm not sure how familiar you are with the development approvals around the area. So a couple of these questions might need to be deferred to PRS. But in opening, you know, from a traffic management perspective, there's two major issues with the reopening of River Road North. And in the report, it cited driver behaviour and heavy vehicle movements. Do we have any quantitative data to support what those movements would actually look like or what historically they did prior to the road being closed?
I can't talk to the historic stuff when the road was previously open, but I can talk to, I guess, where it is now. At the current state, River Road in its closed form, we have got a high request number for speeding issues. Hence why there's speed awareness signs on there as a way to try and address that. It is a concern and at the moment, without the heavy vehicle access, that's, the heavy vehicles is zero. The potential is that if you do open it, that can change because they have an access point and there's limitations in what you can restrict and how restrict heavy vehicles. B-doubles can be restricted quite easily because of permits, but anything to semi-trailers, you can't, they can drive on any road technically without permits. So there is a concern and most, the community in particular can mix up B-doubles with semis quite easily. So they could think that they're heavy vehicles, B-doubles, but technically they could be semis and they're allowed on there. So there is concern, but part of the process with development is that every land use that comes into that industrial estate will do a development application as well for that land use and it'll have the traffic impacts done as well. And if River Road's open, they'll have an option to then think of using River Road as an house, which will alleviate some of the pressures on the other sides of the network where they may do assessments as well. So just something to be conscious of, the historic data I can't speak to.
Yep. And I note that some consultation was taken with urban utilities just to gauge what their movements are. And the report says could receive up to 100 tanker filling trucks a day. Do we actually know the direction those trucks are presently travelling from? Are they, are they coming off the highway and down Archer Street?
So the consultation was prior to this petition, was the petition before with them?
We don't have any information around those actual movements.
No.
You know, I agree that at the present time, it wouldn't be the right thing to open the road. But noting the development that's, you know, planned down there in the future and what's currently happening with the construction of Warner Road, and I understand that this has been mentioned in the report. It would be the view of the department not to re-interrogate this or reinvestigate this because there is a council resolution withstanding that says that this remain closed in perpetuity. So for this to even be a consideration of traffic planning, you know, from a departmental level, would the council resolution, you know, have to be revisited before, before the department would actually take action to reinvestigate or re-interrogate the opening of River Road?
I guess I wouldn't be able to answer. It's on the resolution side of things. I can only talk to the technicals. There is an outstanding resolution, obviously, to keep it close.
Would that preclude them from undertaking investigative works to reopen?
Sorry, through the chair? I wouldn't have thought so, so no.
Okay. Even though there's a council resolution that says that it should be closed and remain so in perpetuity?
If information comes to light that, you know, warrants that being re-investigated, then that can happen and those technical considerations can be given. And then a matter would be brought forward, a report would be brought forward to council to consider revising their decision.
Thank you. Because I know in the report, and I might be getting into PRS territory here, but the Kitaba Homes approval, which I understand has been shelved for a number of years. Eventually, that would allow through access to Bognuda Street. And then inadvertently, we're creating a rat run, even though the report says that it's intended for local traffic only. The temptation is always there, you know, to escape through a rat run. So we're not potentially creating a future problem in the development of the Kitaba Homes if the Nelson Street outlet decides to go through the Kitaba Homes development to end up on Bognuda Street anyway?
Great question. Like reviewing the development plans and from a traffic perspective, the way the road layout has been done as part of that approval isn't the straight, most straightforward.
Yeah, I've reviewed it.
So I don't believe it will. I think it'll be a local catchment thing, not necessarily a broader catchment thing, which is where this will open up if you do open River Road, because you'll get a lot more traffic from the broader catchment as well as the local catchment. Whereas the Kitaba Homes development will only really open it up for the locals, which is, I think, a positive. One of the things to be conscious of is that the way the development approvals have occurred have been with the old resolution and it's a good outcome. It's keeping the residential from the industrial separate.
I agree.
And we have a lot of developments where we haven't done that well and we missed the opportunity. So there's a concern, I guess, from a traffic and departmentally review that you'll open it up and you'll cause these issues and they cause a worse outcome. So it is a balancing act and there is a potential that in the future you may revisit this after time.
Yeah.
That's probably a better way to do it.
And I guess that's what I wanted to encapsulate in the messaging back to the petitioner, saying that right now, this, this is actually a great solution for us to have it closed. And it only takes one glance at the current near map satellite imaging to understand that it's a good thing that we're not pushing cars down there. We know Archer Street is not properly formed. We know Archer Street is not properly formed. It's a dangerous place for local traffic to be traversing. But, you know, thinking about what it what it might look like in one or two or three years' time, you know, once Warner Road's been established, once we understand what the Urban Utilities and Violia truck movements are down there, it's probably worth having a a look at again and it's probably worth, um I guess, injecting some of that optimism in in into our response to that petitioner. Would you agree?
Absolutely. And the the Archer Street as part of the construction works at the moment is getting closed off.
Yes.
And then the new Warner Road opportunity will be there, better opportunity. The roads have been constructed on Hume Drive, which will be better quality as well. Um and it'll be also good to see what the industrial developments bring along because they may bring things that may not be a high traffic demand, which reduces that risk of that rat running.
Losing, yeah.
So absolutely agree, yeah.
Um awesome. And I I don't take it that you would know, but um the approvals that are currently um in place for walkers and Kataba, if you if do you know if there are any contributions as part of their approval? Um you know, by way of conditions imposed on them to upgrade River Road north of Nelson?
Uh so there are no conditions. The way the conditions currently work is with the Kataba in particular, they actually cul-de-sac it at the north end. Um and they don't have to do any frontage works, which is usually the case of fronting. So there is no works on River Road, which is, so if it does change, council will have to pick up that.
Yeah.
Tab.
Okay.
Um and then the the industrial estate actually has no conditions relating to River Road because it's been planned around not opening it.
Yeah, I I I figured as much, um just being optimistic about council's financial position. Um thanks, Mr Ellis. I appreciate it.
No worries.
Any other questions for Mr Ellis? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll move recommendations A and B. Do I have a seconda for that? Thank you, Council Fekna. We'll move into discussion. I guess following off what you've said, Council Fekna, um I note from the petitioner, they they've made a statement that the end of River Road has remained closed for several years despite a promise of additional thoroughfares. And I can just see that since two thousand and fifteen, certainly there's been nothing for River Road to to open up. And I also note, um petition talked about that uh Hume Drive has been closed. I think it's been closed since February and that will open up in November as well. It's just been delayed because of weather.
Potentially not November, ma'am.
Sorry?
Potentially not November.
Oh, okay. I was told this week it'd be late November. Do you know when that's open?
No, I haven't been advised, but I understand they're suffering significant delays down there.
Right. Okay. Okay, well, on um. Okay, three days ago, council told me it was late November.
That's what their current that's that's what the current approval says. Um they've got an operational works approval. Um and they've said that the the completion of that work would be around November. Um however, I've had anecdotal evidence, you know, talking to residents down there who inadvertently have been speaking with contractors there and they're foreshadowing greater blowout. So I I'm I'm currently um working with the department to ascertain a a proper timeline so that we can be informing our residents ahead of time if there are going to be significant delays. So it's all unknown. That's what their current approval says, that 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 advice is currently correct. But, you know, I I've got a gut feeling that it might blow out.
Thank you, Council Fekna. Any other discussion on the matter?
Um yeah, just um this is something that's um always very interesting for um the people in our Bundanberg catchment. Um and often it seems like one of those quick fix solutions um to open it up. Um the road up there is in 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 significant need of repair, as outlined in the report. Um it would require significant investment from council. I'm not saying that we would shy away from that, but considering the current state of affairs there, I I support the position to keep it closed. Um and I was hoping to um and ma- maybe we um maybe if it's all right, C E O, that that the letter that's going to be sent back to the petitioner um come to both councillor Doyle and myself one last time to to P R S to see what that official response would be to the petitioner. Um just to ensure that we.
Certainly, of course. Thank you.
Um. No, so, you know, and and there's been a there's been a lot of movement down there. There's actually going to be a new road constructed. I mean, it was always, I I was always against reopening it if we were forcing people to use Archer Street, um which is a horrible road. That was nothing more than a driveway and not built to council's technical standards because it was meant to be used as a service road to service the Urban Utilities and in Violia um plant um down the end there. So um you know, if new information comes to light, I think that we should take every opportunity to investigate it. Um you know, if we if we have the chance.
Thank you, Council Fekna. Council Kunselman?
Uh just a correction on page fifty-eight. It says it's Division Four.
I think it was old Division Four, councillor Kunselman.
Well, that might have been.
Yes, I think it was. Yeah, so that's a pa- back then on that paper. So the word about the correction, it was Division Four.
I appreciate that.
I know because I used to be in that division as well. Any other discussion? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour of recommendations A and B, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Council Island, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much, Council Island.
Thank you.
It's carried. We now move on to item three, which is the Red Bank Plains Library Additional Community Meeting Space. It's a response to a notice of motion. Um and there's a re- report on a response to notice of motion uh moved by Deputy Mayor Jacob Madsen on the nineteenth of May uh that does a design be prepared and costed for a conversion of the former mobile library garage at Red Bank Plains Library and s- with said design to focus on delivery of community meeting space with after-hours access as well as external landscaping to allow appropriate pathways to after-hours access and used by community on special occasions. The recommendation is that the report on the Red Bank Plains Library Additional Community Meeting Space uh response to notice of motion be received and the contents noted. So may I speak to any relevant council officers on this?
Uh thank you, mayor. I'd actually like to move that it's tabled for a month as um councillor Island's been away and there's some further conversations we'd like to have before moving on with the matter. I know that it's a receiving note, but there's some associated materials that we probably need to gather for a more enlightened discussion in a month's time.
So you'd like to lay it on the table?
Yes, I have moved that.
Okay, move. Um councillor, I'll just check with you as a fellow divisional councillor. You happy to second that?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on that? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Island, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. The matter's laid on the table. We move on to item four, which is the Deering Heights Heritage Centre. Uh and it's uh the report being noted and the no further attributes required on this matter at this time. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Morning, Mayor and councillors. Peter Tabullo, General Manager of Planning and Regulatory Services.
Thank you, Mr Tabullo. I know this report is basically saying due to a change of ownership, we now have to wait for the a new developer to work through this. Is there anything that council can do to move it along or progress it?
Um not at this stage, mayor. We're really in the in the hands of the of the developer when they're ready to progress that. Um as I say in the report, they're they're aware of the situation. They've had meetings with the um indigenous parties. Um but it's not their priority at the present time. So once um they're ready to progress that stage of the of the development, um they'll come back and speak to council.
Okay. Thank you, Mr Tabullo. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr Tabullo. I'll move this recommendation. Do I have a seconda for that? Thank you, Council Fekna. Any discussion? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Island, how do you vote?
Affirm- affirmative.
Thank you. That's passed. We'll now move on to the confirmation of minutes, item number five. And the first minutes will be looking to confirm the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee um minutes from the fourteenth of July. And I'll move those. Do I have a seconda for those? I'm looking at the my deputy, councillor Tully. Would you like to second those? Thank you. Any discussion on those minutes? No, I'll put the minutes to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your he- hand. Thank you. It's unanimous in the chamber. And how do you vote, Councillor Island?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We'll now move on to the officers' reports. And the first one is the Ipswich General Cemetery Heritage Project Concept Design. Um and its recommendation is that the report be received and the contents noted. Uh would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this um paper? No? In that case, I'll move this recommendation. Do I have a seconda for that? Thank you, Council Kunselman. I'll move into discussion.
I just have a query, um mayor, in relation to this, the recommendation be received and noted. Does that that sort of implies that that's the end of the matter? If we're just noting it, there is 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 anything further going to happen?
Yeah, so they're recommending that the concept design is the Memorial Garden. There were three um designs put forward for consultation with related parties and others. And it talks about the the fact that there's already been money allocated um in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, as well as twenty-three, twenty-five for the construction.
I I think that should be incorporated or or the words reflecting that recorded in the recommendation because the recommendation doesn't do anything. It just receives and notes the report.
Would you like to put forward a a different recommendation, councillor Tully?
Uh well, I'm happy that uh that becomes paragraph A of the report, be received and noted. And B, and I might need the assistance of you and or others and or the C E O um to to reflect um how it's going to be brought um continued or further developed.
Yeah, that they, I guess, that the um the concept design of the Memorial Garden is proceeds?
Yeah, I'm happy with that. I think it needs something simple.
Something like that.
Yeah, just something from that second last paragraph in the conclusion.
Um and B, that council.
Um proceed with developing a final concept design and cost estimates for the Memorial Garden design.
That council proceed with.
Yeah, this is directly from that paragraph, yeah.
Oh, right. So that um.
Yeah, just from the words to council proceed with, th- this is from that second last paragraph and then just to the word design. It doesn't need that final sentence about the uh encapsulation.
Oh, to proceed with developing a final concept design and cost estimates for the Memorial Garden design.
Design, yes.
So, Vicky, council proceed. So I'll take away, take away the two words, the design. So proceed with developing a final concept. Design and cost estimates for the Memorial Garden design. For the Memorial Ga- Garden. Can we capitalise Memorial and Garden, please? As the mover, I'm happy with that. Uh councillor Kunselman, as a secondary, you happy happy with? Yep, thank you, councillor Tully. Any other discuss- and I'll just check the C E O. Yep.
Could I just make a general comment about reports, just generally, not only this one, just to receive a note, but if there is a another progress to to occur, I think it's better for the community to understand that it's not just received and noted and filed away, that there is um action um proposed.
Yes. I also note on page one hundred and nine, it says the Genealogical Society, it should be the Ipswich Genealogical Society. And I think there's been quite a considered um project by the organisation, dealing with a lot of related parties. And I think it'll be a a big improvement on the on the cemetery there. Councillor Fekna?
Yeah, I just want to thank the project team. Um uh we've been um thoroughly briefed along the way and it's been interesting and exciting, um and certainly insightful. Um a lot of time and care has gone into prospective designs. Uh we met yourself, myself, councillor Tully, um to consider these designs. It's an important cemetery. Um and lots of people in um certainly in Division Three um consider this not to be of standard in its current state. So um these works um will be beautiful um and will be well considered. There's a lot of time and effort that's gone into understanding um the history of the cemetery and and I really want to thank the team for that because, you know, it it is a bit of a tricky thing at times to reconfigure or to do works in the cemetery. And the team has taken absolutely every measure to ensure that they're being respectful um at all times. Um and I just think, yeah, it it it's really wonderful. You you see the pictures there, you see the designs that that we've been shown. Um it'll be a great way to showcase a really important part of our city's history. So um I support this project and I'm so pleased that it's been funded.
Thank you, councillor Fekna. Any other discussion? Put recommendations A and B to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. And uh councillor Island, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. It's unanimous and carried. We're now moving to item seven, which is personal tributes in councils, open space and road network. It's assessment of an application. So it's um the recommendation is that the personal tribute, as noted in the application, is detailed in attachment one, be approved by council. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this? No? In that case, I will move that recommendation. Do I have a seconda for that? Thank you, councillor Kunselman. Would anyone like to speak to this recommendation? Which is a tribute for um Mr Murray Kendrick?
Um ma- mayor, may I speak?
Yes, please do, councillor Island.
Um earlier this year, um Mrs Kendrick and her daughter attended our condolences um uh at the council meeting. And at the time, she um queried whether or not there was some way that the family could have her husband's work for the community established. And um I'm very pleased to see that we have acknowledged the good work that he's done, both through other organisations and through council, um by allowing them to uh erect this plaque.
Thank you, councillor Island. And um the application, I think, um i- is very clear that Mr Kendrick has contributed, who's born and raised here in Ipswich, has contributed significantly uh to our community and our city, um as as um as an architect and other other ways and building design services across our our city, including the design of the Nerama Gardens Bridge as well. Um I do note that normally we would look at things, um there's usually a twelve-month period um after the passing of the person and the council has recommended that we uh waiver this particular thing and I'm very I'm I'm supportive of that as well. Is there any other discussion?
Um although it's included in the documents in the pack, I think it's um worth just calling out um the end of the letter where it says to pay tribute to his life and design legacy, we would like to have a plaque placed at the bridge within the Nerama Gardens, which Murray designed. I think that's so wonderful. Um he was proud of the bridges and he used to visit them often. We'd love for visitors to the garden to see Murray's name when admiring the surrounds and walking across the bridges. Um very wholesome, so I speak in support of this.
Thank you, councillor Fekna. Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and it's in the ru- in the chambers. Councillor Island, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. It's unanimous and carried. We'll now move on to item eight, which is the um Red Bank Plains Road Stage Three Upgrade. And it's a report concerning the recommendation to vary the civil works, um civil construction works um contract with all roads as per attachment one. And there's recommendations A, B and C. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this? No? In that case, I will move this report. Do I have a seconda? Thank you, councillor Tully. Any discussion on this report? Thank you, councillor Tully.
Just very briefly, um mayor, I think the report the report speaks for itself in relation to the financial issues affecting our local government um and the people of Australia generally, um and and the uh rising costs uh even of projects which are partially underway, a- as this one is. It um shows the great difficulties um we, the other seventy-six councils in Queensland, will continue to face for some time. shows the great difficulties, um, we, the other seventy-six councils in Queensland, will continue to face for some time, um, because of escalating prices, and, um, it it's one of those very difficult issues, and it will, in my view, will probably, um, affect our coming budgets for at least the next two, three or four years, and, um, it's one of those very difficult situations that, um, pretty well everything we do is money. Um, that any government does at any level, is it all come, always comes back to money, so I'm supportive of it, because it's a much-needed upgrade from the, uh, Kruger Roundabout, um, through to the Red Bank Plains Shopping Centre. So, I I certainly support that.
Thank you very much, councillor Tully. Any other discussion?
Mayor, may I speak?
Yes, please do, councillor Ireland.
Um, I'd also like to, um, see this, um, project proceed. The residents have been extremely patient, and the road is falling to pieces, and intersections are falling to pieces. So we're just doing patch-up jobs that only, if it rains, only lasts for a very short period of time. Um, it's a major road, and so it it will be good to see it progress. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ireland. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We'll now move on to item nine, which is the adoption of the updated construction, repair and property access policy. And the recommendation is that the revised policy titled Construction and Repair of Property Access Policy, as detailed in attachment five, be adopted. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this matter?
Yes, please, just to clarify.
Yes, thank, now I have the relevant council officer, please.
Morning, mayor, councillors and CEO.
Thank you.
Um, Cameron Hoag, Works Manager, Works Field Services.
What was your name again, sorry?
Cameron Hoag.
Thank you, Mr Hoag. Uh, councillor Tully?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wanna, I I think I understand the, uh, multiplicity of, um, documentation for this report. It's the track changes is, um, this is on page one eighty-one, um. Am I right in understanding that what's tracked in red and crossed out, that's gone? And what's in yellow is, um, just for information?
Yes, that's correct. So have you, have you got the new policy in front of you?
Yeah, but, yeah, that's that's the next document, I think, on page one hundred and eighty-three, um.
Yeah, so in essence, it's just aligning the the what's on the local laws and the driveway fact sheet, um, to to make sure that landowners are are aware that responsibility of driveways are their responsibility. Because previously it was council, um, were undertaking point five, construction or maintenance were the first point five of their driveways, so that was just to align that, to make it clear for landowners.
So the actual crossover itself, the the section, uh, A to be deleted, um, indicates that council is responsible for for a short, uh, distance, point five of a metre on the invert, so that's disappearing.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. That's all, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr Hoag?
Uh, yes, sorry. Um, thank you, Mr Hogan. Is that in line with other councils' policies? Yeah. And are we far behind, like, timeframe-wise on that? Is it something?
Yeah, it's an old policy that, and that local law was updated in twenty seventeen, so it should have been done then, and we're just aligning that through good governance now, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Hoag. I'll move this recommendation. Do I have a second up for that? Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chambers. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you, councillor Ireland. Unanimous and carried. Move on to item ten, which is the adoption of the updated graffiti removal policy, and the recommendation is that the revised policy titled graffiti removal policy, as detailed in attachment three, be adopted. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this policy? No? In that case, I will move this paper. Do I have a second up? Thank you, councillor Fickner. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. It's carried. Move on to item eleven, which is the Infrastructure and Environment Department Capital Delivery Report. And the recommendation is the report be received and contents noted. Would anyone have any questions for the relevant council officer on this? No? In that case, I will move this paper. Do I have a second up? Thank you, councillor Kuncelman. Any discussion? I think the report was very self-explanatory. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. How do you vote, councillor Ireland?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. It's unanimous and carried. We move on to item twelve, which is the exercise of delegation report. And the recommendation is the report be received and the contents noted. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officer on this matter? No? In that case, I will move the delegation report. Do I have a second up? Thank you, councillor Kuncelman. Any discussion? Okay, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and, uh, in the in the chamber. Uh, councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. It's unanimous and carried. We'll now move on to item thirteen, which is the Planning, Environment, Court Action Status Report. And the recommendation is the report be received and contents noted. Uh, may I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Good morning, Mayor and councillors. Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
Mr Bowles, are you able to give us an update at all on the, um, the the land track BMI?
Uh, unfortunately, no update, um.
In this morning's, uh, Ipswich News Today, it reported that the they were going to hear from the court sometime in September.
Uh, that would be for the, um, hearing for the, um, the judicial review applications, the separate matter, yes, unfortunately, um, that won't be the judgment for, well, it may be, um, but I can't guarantee that'll be the judgment for the appeals.
Okay, so no word on when we'll hear?
I'm afraid not, no.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions for Mr Bowles? No, thank you very much, Mr Bowles. I move that this report, I move this report. Do I have a second up for that? Thank you, councillor Fickner. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous in the in the chamber. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you, it is, um, unanimous and carried. Um, there are no notices of motion, there are no matters arising, I don't have any procedural motions or formal matters. So I will finish this meeting at nine forty-seven. AM. Um, just checking before we adjourn normally, it's a ten-minute adjournment, knowing how close it is to ten o'clock, I'm just seeking, will we do a thirty-minute adjournment, or? Okay. For the next one? That's right. So before we go to the G G and T committee? Yeah. Okay, I'm proposing that we don't, I'm proposing that we adjourn, uh, we we come back for the G T at at ten, at twenty, uh, AM. So may I put that to the vote, those in favour? Or don't know, leave it at this?
I need to raise a point, there was a a committee meeting, there was a.
Okay.
No, but the.
Okay, we'll come back in ten minutes' time.
But there was a committee meeting.
Yes. That's ten minutes. Okay, so we'll leave it as it is, that we come back in ten minutes. Yes, the, and the thirty minutes, okay. Oh, my suggestion is we come back at ten twenty. That's a suggestion. Thank you very much.